We're going to bring tonight's meeting to order. We do have a quorum, one person missing. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda for tonight? We got a first, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Agenda is approved. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our October 7th. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Followed by a moment of silence. Thank you very much. That's the first time that's happened. Hopefully it will be the last. Our minutes from our October 7th meeting. Anybody have any questions, comments, amendments? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th? Got a first and a second?
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask you to clarify. I know this is a joint hearing of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. And for members of the public who may not be aware, just want to ask you to clarify that this is the meeting of the Planning Commission right now. For those members who may not know who's the Planning Commission, who's the Board of Supervisors, and for the record.
I will certainly do that. There was next thing on my agenda.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor, approve of the minutes. Raise your right hand. Minutes approved. For members of the public out here that have never been to our meetings before, this is the Planning Commission. This is a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. We are simply an advisory commission. The Board of Supervisors makes the determination. So please do not leave if there is something on the agenda that is important to you. They will make the final decision. We only make recommendations. Okay. First thing on the agenda is, as you can see on the board up there. Case number SU 11-20-21, request by CWS X LLC for an indefinite special use permit to develop a wireless communication facility. The subject property is owned A1 agriculture and per Article 1 of zoning ordinance, Section 1413, or uses requiring a special use permit. Wireless communication facilities exceeding 100 feet in height requires a special use permit. The subject property is 376.2 acres and the property owners intend to lease 10,000 square feet area to the applicant. The wireless communication facility would be confined to a roughly a 50 by 100 fenced-in compound, 100-foot fenced-in compound. The total site disturbance, including access road and fenced-in compound, is estimated to be approximately 1.18 acres. The monopole tower proposed height is 175 feet with an attached four-foot lightning rod. The subject property is located on South Blue Ridge Turnpike, Route 231, and is owned by M&amp;W Forum LLC. The subject parcel is identified on the Mass Kelling tax map as 69.7, and an existing dwelling on the site has a postal address of 950 South Blue Ridge Turnpike, Somerset, Virginia, 22972. We have received two letters relative to this proposal, and everyone on the Planning Commission has seen that. I will not read it into the record tonight. We also received another item, which I'm quite confused about. It had to do with an appeal to the BCA. The Planning Commission has nothing to do with that, just for clarification. Whatever happens tonight will be subject to appeal in other manner. Our county attorney would like to chime in on that. Please do. But...
I think it's fine, Mr. Chairman, to proceed tonight with the hearing.
Right. Well, I was, yeah. Mr. Webb, do you have anything to add to this application? You have gone through it, item by item, I am sure, and it meets all the requirements of the ordinance.
Yeah, so, this is right here. As I said before, cell towers are a unique planning perspective that, you know, this is a technically complicated application. There's a lot of items that our code requires of the applicant. I know in LaRae, cell towers allow a special use permit, and all it says is "cell tower." We have a really technical process, and again, in my 16 years, you complete this, you've done something. There's a lot of background and work that goes into the application. So we received it in September 3rd, and, you know, I think we all knew about it, and it was deemed complete. I mean, they fill the application out, they pay the fee, we reviewed it, we go up the road. So that's what happened. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear. As far as, you know, again, from a planning perspective, interesting thing about a cell tower application is that, you know, I mean, traffic, noise, the traditional things we think about when we have special use permits, we just don't really have with this. It's electricity that goes to it. I don't think anyone's going to really say it's pretty, but I do think we also know the service that it provides, and we'll get into that in a second. So, you know, just to be clear, the compound, you know, the 50 by 100-foot compound, there is a road going to it, so there is a little bit more disturbance area than actually what it takes up. But, you know, essentially, you have a, you know, 50-foot by 100-pound compound that is accessible. It's fenced. This particular location, we would have, you know, measured as best we could, but you can see, as I sort of put in the application, you know, you're 900 feet from the southern property line, 700 feet from the northern property line. I tried to measure the best I could as far as the different houses around it. We've got 344 South Blue Ridge, about 1,100 feet, roughly, 227 South Blue Ridge, 1,800 feet, roughly. Liberty Mills is 2700 feet. Turnpike, 3,000 feet. When companies do these studies, they call it, things call it ring study. So they sort of go to the general area where they need some service, and then yours come in and do their magic and frequency studies, and that's stuff I would never be able to understand. And then determine, you know, the location, the best location for the tower based on the service that is necessary. So this is how this site was selected. So, you know, a monopole, 75-foot rod. If you look at the, I think one of the things that's interesting, if you look at the visual impacts, one of the pictures, you can see right in front of it, I'd be just looking at the picture, and I have driven out there, I didn't go to the balloon test, but it was interesting thing I found about the pictures. I have a little hard time seeing the pole, but I can definitely see the lattice electrical towers I cut off with this property. So it's kind of interesting, that sort of draws my eye, oh, yeah, the pole is back there. So, and again, and I do understand, and I don't think anyone thinks that it's sightseeing by any chance, but I do believe there have been some, as I said, the recommendation. I think they have tried their best to minimize it, reduce the height, be sensitive to, you know, the fact that this is a rural area, it's very scenic, and they are sensitive to that. But on the other hand, you know, this area does not have cell service, and to a certain degree, with schools, with emergency services, as the letter we found today, that we received a few days ago, this comes from not a luxury, but to a certain degree, it is a necessity, and it could be, in the right circumstances, it could be a lifesaver. The applicant is open, and has basically, you know, has essentially said that emergency services needs to use a part of that, that they're welcome to do that. That is kind of carte blanche in the future, and something that can be accessed by emergency services. I think we have, I think CWS, they said they had six locations in the county, and two of the locations of emergency services has, I guess, some sort of a wire there for services. I'm just not going to be here too much longer, but, you know, again, as I said with my recommendation, we have a complete application, highly scrutinized application. I do feel from a planning perspective, it has been minimized as best as possible, the location on the southern end of that parcel. You know, as I said, from the measurements, you know, there's not anyone right there on top of it. That's not saying people can't see it, and it won't change the view, but I do believe that the benefits that I've sort of briefly went over do outweigh the potential unsilence of the actual pole. So, any questions for me? And again, I also pointed out that our comprehensive plan does support this type of, you know, this type of communication. You know, we've had conversations about broadband, and I don't know where the county is with broadband, but this will bring, I don't call it broadband, but this will bring high-speed internet capabilities to those areas. So, that's all I have for now. I'll have you sit back and listen. Any questions for me?
Wait, yes, Mr. Webb, one moment, please. If the Planning Commission does not have a lot of questions tonight, that's because in our meeting two weeks ago, we beat this up quite thoroughly. So, if you don't have a lot of questions from the Planning Commission, that's why, and a lot of people were in attendance that are here tonight. Any question from the Planning Commission for Mr. Webb? Peter?
Your earlier statement about the complexity of the application raises the question, I think, of whether we want to change our requirements so the application process is not as expensive or extensive since, I think most people would say, you know, given proper location, this kind of cell tower providing wireless service is essential to this county. So have you thought about whether or not we ought to change our requirements so we don't have a thick application like this for cell towers?
Yes, I have. I think there are parts of the code, and this was adopted, I've taken many years ago, and usually what happens is you sort of borrow an ordinance from someone else, and that's probably what happened. Things have changed in the last 20 years. I think there's some elements of the current code that are good. I think the balloon tests, we don't have that for, you know, I live, and I think that's an essential element. But, you know, the lease agreement and certain things that we provided, I don't know, we asked that of anybody else. So I think, this is independent of this hearing going forward, there are also some state updates as far as we probably could, you know, modernize the code, and I think that, yes, at the end of the day, and as I said, from a planning perspective, it's a pretty unique in the sense that really the issue's visual. So let's, you know, if that's really what's important, let's keep things like the visual...
What's your recommendation?
Well, I think we...
The Planning Commission...
Right, I think once we get through this...
Review the ordinances?
Right, yeah, sure.
Requirements, or you do, or what?
Yeah, I think when we get through this, next, you know, soon, let's talk about this ordinance.
It'll be up to the Planning Commission, Peter, to make recommendations for changes to this ordinance. This was done about six, seven years ago. Mr. Carter was chairman, and the way it is written up is to protect the county and the people in the county to the extent possible. That's why it is quite detailed, the same thing with the solar, large field solar facilities, which we all worked on. So if there's going to be a change to that, I would imagine it'd be up to the Planning Commission to make recommendations, to form a committee and move forward with that. But that's why it is the way it is today.
I agree. Second question, I think, is, this tower, as I understand it from Mr. Davies' testimony in our workshop, currently has two providers that have signed up to put antennae on the But optimally, most of us, optimally, it ought to, we ought to fill it out with six antennae that they've applied for, and that the providers, far as include the principal providers that we all, we all use, like AT&amp;T and Verizon and so forth for our cell service. Have you had discussions with the applicant or with Mr. Davies about the prospect of filling this out with commonly used providers?
Although Mr. Davies, you know, when he talks, he can maybe answer that better. I know there are two. I don't want to guess too much, but I think on cell towers, you know, if you're, if you have a service and you're in an area that has a different provider, there's some sort of mechanism in which, you know, you can still use that tower to, you know, service. It kind of prioritizes, and so two kind of large, you know, sort of named providers could really, you know, do the, I get, I'm really kind of going off the expertise here, but could potentially provide service, you know, at least in a pinch in that spot to folks who are passing through or there, that maybe don't, you know, directly have, you know, say AT&amp;T or whatever, Sprint, I think you can still use that tower. But I guess that's really just a kind of a market sort of decision eventually, you know, I think that the applicant needs a certain number to move forward, and it's two, is, at least seems to be the number that is at least mentioned. So I would assume eventually we'll see more providers, but again, I don't, I don't want to speculate too much on sort of that end of the business, I probably don't know much more, other than that there's two right now.
I would think the applicant's representative will be able to answer that question a little more clearly. Any other, any other questions from the Planning Commission, Mr. Webb? If not, would the applicant like to, as applicant representative, have anything to say? Please identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Butch Davies. I'm with the law firm of Davies, Farrell, Will, Llewellyn, and Edwards. I get exhausted just saying. I'm here and connected by your electronic system is Hope McCary. Hope has been the person that I've been working with over the past several years on communication wireless towers. The presentation, there are six towers that they've put up in Madison. And to respond to the question, they do target trying to get two users on it. What you'll find is that once it's up and operating, other users will come, and you can see that in a couple of their other towers in the 29 corridor. They came in with one or two users, they now have four users on the tower. I know Brightwood is one, that's an example of that. One of the things that I'd like to do, we've done a short PowerPoint, and I'd like to go through it with you. I think it will answer some of the questions that you may have, and if we could do the first...
I don't have it.
It's, you can put it right here. Right there, right there, you're still...
Nice recovery.
I like seeing my name in type, that's good. If we could go to the next slide. This gives you a little history, this slide gives you a little history of our community wireless structures. They have a total of 56 towers in 11 Virginia counties, as we noted, six are in Madison. And they have, they try to get all four major mobile wireless service providers, they fix broadband and make it accessible. So one of the things that's a real challenge is the cost of broadband, and in many counties, they have not been able to do it. What has happened is the wireless towers actually provide that access to broadband, and that is a major benefit to the citizens. The letter which you receive from emergency services is accurate. This is an area which is not well-served, it is one of the things that you would have a benefit from. The people in that area obviously would be able to access cellphone service in an emergency. I know there's, I don't very seldom use mine unless it is an emergency, so I think that's, that's an important issue. If I can have the next slide. This is designed as a map to show you where all of their towers are located. You will note in Madison, their tower locations are in red. They pretty much have followed the 29 corridor and the 231 corridor. This is part of that continuing service to cover 231 and to cover Route 20. They, I can recall, since I have represented them for some time, I recall when we wanted to put a tower at Somerset, and the folks in orange turned out to oppose it. The Board of Montpelier did not want a cellphone tower, so they, they opposed it. The Supreme Court came for a visit to Montpelier. The Supreme Court said, "We won't be able to come back because we have to have cellphone service." And so the CWS, Mike Quinn actually called me and was embarrassed, and he said, "I know I opposed you before. Could you do it? We have to have that service." It's the nature of our system, it's the ability to be able to communicate that is so important. If we could go to the next slide. I thought it would be helpful to look at the benefits. We know we have mobile wireless service, we have fixed broadband, which will be a benefit, public safety is clearly a benefit, and you get broadband access using private versus public funds. That is a major issue and one that, in this particular area, it's, it's good to have the cellphone tower in place for the broadband services if needed. Next slide. This is the letter from Madison Emergency Services. It is in an endorsement and states the need for the service. Next slide. This is the site location. You can see that it is centrally located to serve 231 and Route 20. Next slide. This shows the location, and it shows that this particular view is good, the river bends, you can see the bend in the river. Orange on this side, Madison on the other side. The real key is that if there is screaming, you can see it with the trees, it does affect the visibility. One of the things that community wireless does is they have to have this reviewed by historic preservation in Richmond, and the SHPO negotiations, their original fouling was at 199 feet. They reduced it in their negotiations to get SHPO approval to the 175 with a four-foot antenna on top of that. The reason that's important is because they got the endorsement of SHPO. It's, it's something that you, that you have to do when you go through their process. Next slide. This shows the expanded service, a three-mile and a five-mile radius, and you notice the amount of area that it covers both on 231 and 20, as well as a significant portion of the Madison County area. Next slide. This is the shared Chantel propagation projections without CWS's service in unit. If you will note, it follows but has very limited coverage coming down 231 and limited coverage on Route 20. The next slide. And you will note now, we have significant coverage. It really fills in, it's like the hole in the donut, it fills it in and covers it, and that is important for providing services. One of the things we spend a lot of time on is visual impact. That was noted by your planning official, and I would ask you to take a look at the next slide. This slide is basically one that covers the date that's filed, and it's, it's helpful. The next slide. Our pictures that show 175-foot tower. That's important. After your work session, one of the people saw me and said, "Is it 199 feet?" And I said, "Yes." And I was corrected by Hope, who said, "It actually, when we took the original picture, they were at 199 feet. The balloon was done at 199 feet." In our negotiations for the SHPO, we reduced it. Our pictures have been also reduced when we actually filed the application. And if you will note, that is, there's a circle that shows where the balloon is. There is a next picture, the Somerset Christian Church. You can see the monopole over in the rear, not highly visible. Next picture. The tower is not visible at all behind the trees, it disappears, and this is true for most of the road. The, the actual growth that's natural basically adds it. Next one. This is Liberty Mills Road facing north, and again, in the distance, you see the top of the tower, but you also see the growth that's there in the area. And perhaps the most negative of the views is the next picture. This is the access 231 facing east. The monopole is 2,620 feet away. You see it, but it is such... You see it, but it is such a significant distance away, it is not as visible. It does not have as much screening from this approach. But it is adequate to hide it. Next slide. I think it's important that you realize that the telecom infrastructure is important. The county wireless communications facilities ordinance has met access to fixed wireless broadband and mobile wireless services for the residents and businesses and travelers. One of the things that we've learned as we've done this is it does have an impact. You have people who take scenic drives using 231 or 20. You have Montpelier, they have a tower there, but as you go down the road, you blip out. This will allow and cover that, that issue. And it addresses the urgent need for what I think is the public right for access to broadband with it being funded privately. I don't think there's any question that this is a power which benefits and expands the services in Madison County. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I think Hope can be accessible if you have any questions for her.
Any questions from the Planning Commission? Mr. Davies? Peter?
Mr. Davies?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that you'll feel comfortable in addressing this question. But with an eye toward simplifying our county ordinance with regard to cell towers. Can you give us a general sense of how long it took to site this tower? And how much was expended in doing so?
The resources to do it were significant. I don't know exactly the amount for this tower, but I know some of them have, the total expenditures have reached $100,000.
How much?
I don't think this one is at that level, but it is certainly significant money.
I didn't hear your figure.
I said $100,000. In studies, we are fortunate that we were able to reach an agreement on the SHPO. We've had difficulty in a couple of them. This situation, it's been, it's been a good year and a half or two years looking for the right location. One, in the work session, one of the things that bothered me is the person said, "Well, you can move the tower down the road to my place, it's only 3,300 feet away." The problem is the coverage, you need to be able to have it situated so that you can reach out and cover the areas that your user on the tower will want to have access to. And that's the reason there's been the focus on 231, 20, and that service area within that five-mile radius. And that, that's, that takes time. And it has, I can tell you that I talked to the, to the principal involved on behalf of Community Wireless some time ago. And they actually went out and looked at alternative sites and could not find one that met the requirements that this site does, which is why they, they signed the lease.
And secondly, following up on the question of, of the providers putting antennae on the tower. I think when you were here for our workshop, you mentioned two names that I didn't recognize as, as already signed up or potentially signed up. But they weren't the, they weren't the providers that most of us use for our cell phone service. What's the prospect of having an AT&amp;T or Verizon?
Verizon is one I know they work with, AT&amp;T they work with. It takes time to get them to come onboard. They have to be able to see a need and they can service that need. I think this particular site gets significant benefit because of its approach to Montpelier. Montpelier has fairly significant traffic. There are people who will be interested, I think, in maintaining their service and their approach from the western or north on 231, and this will provide that service. And I think it's important.
On, on the other six, or five, or whatever it is that already exists, CWS towers. On how many of those are AT&amp;T and Verizon?
I don't know, I couldn't tell you that immediately. I'd have to ask them for that information. I know they're on some of their towers, but not all their towers. And some of them have two users, but the ones in the 29 corridor have multiple users. So that they go on the tower after the towers were up.
Is that information you could provide to us?
Oh sure, I'd be glad to do that. I can, I can certainly ask Coke to get it together and we can let you know where they are and who's on them. So, but I can tell you that the ones with, with multiple units, users are the ones in that 29 corridor to fill in the travelers.
Mr. Allen?
I want to ask you a question, and maybe I don't understand this right, but it's my understanding that if AT&amp;T and Verizon's on that tower, and I have Nextel, I can still hit that tower. And then that tower charges the other hammers out of there, so we still get coverage from whatever service you may have.
Absolutely, no question, no question.
Stevenson?
You've been working with this company for quite some time, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Have they indicated to you that they find Madison's code requirements especially on those?
Actually, they have not, it's, it's detailed. And I think it could be simplified to some extent from my experience. I've represented them in Culpeper, Orange, Madison, and Rappahannock. And I can tell you that one of the, one of the real delights is when you can provide service to a community or an area, the ability to provide emergency services is essential. In a recent hearing that we had in Rappahannock, we got one approved, and the tower that was approved was approved because it provided significant coverage for 522. But it was the people who turned out, the volunteer fire department rescue squad, who really thought that it was essential for their coverage of the county.
Otherwise, Rappahannock probably wouldn't approve that, would they? Okay, unfair comment. Anyone else from the Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Davies.
Thank you, Mr. James, appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone in the public like to make a comment? Gentlemen in the back? All right, Mr. Davies? Sir, would you please stand up? We need to have your name for the record.
William Roper.
Okay.
We're talking about broadband instead of private phone broadband. I'm assuming they're talking about Virginia broadband, would be one of the companies. It's going to be very, could be very relevant. And so, Virginia broadband, I have. You happen to have a line of sight to the tower, so that's a little. Do you happen to know how many residents or how many properties would have a line of sight to this tower?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir. Mr. Hawk?
Would you like me to go to the podium?
No, you can stand right there.
Sounds great. Good evening, Chris Hawk with the Piedmont Environmental Council. PEC is an advocate for the advancement of the public health, safety, and welfare, and the creation of, and the creation and utilization of a new cell tower. And it can directly benefit the public. The proposed tower could raise communication connectivity to the rural area, including businesses, emergency services, farmers, residents, businesses, and tourists alike. New communication connectivity can offer faster emergency responses and increased agricultural business profits through the use of newer technologies. However, PEC raises the importance of protecting the important view sheds within the county. We raise the importance of countywide public access to wireless and broadband. However, we are concerned that the tower may negatively impact both important natural, cultural, and historical resources and the view sheds associated with them. There are a few resources within one mile of the proposed tower that we would like to highlight. The Madison Barbered Rural Historic District, Route 231, a state listed scenic byway. The Rapidan River, which is, which serves as a tourist attraction for fishing, boating, and historical tours. The Journey Through Hallowed Ground, a national recognized scenic byway that stretches from Gettysburg, Pennsylvania to Thomas Jefferson's, Monticello in Charlottesville. Tetley Manor, Somerset Christian Church, as well as multiple conservation units. Each of these resources, as I said, are located within one mile of the tower and are not included in the application because SHPO only requires documentation of half of a mile. So I just want to highlight those as additional potential impacts. It is PEC's recommendations that the county should request the overall height of the tower to be lowered. The paint scheme be utilized to further screen the cell tower and natural colors should be considered browns and greens seem to be effective in other counties. But please do not use blue, that seems to stick out like a sore thumb. Relocating the tower to an area on the property that has natural screening and is not located within a field. And finally, request the users of the additional CWS towers in the other locations in Madison. Thank you for listening to these requests this evening. And as a final note, I would like to say this will be one of my last meetings in Madison County on behalf of the Piedmont Environmental Council. I'll be transitioning to a different location and my coworker, Adam Gilwater, will be taking my position here in Madison, Culpeper, as well as Green. So please welcome Adam after the meeting and say hello to him. And thank you all for being so kind and cordial to me throughout the past few years.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk, we will miss you. Anyone else from the audience have anything? Yes, sir. Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Randy Hamm, and thank you for the opportunity of letting me address y'all tonight. I just have a little bit of concern about this. I have nothing against cell towers. I think we need them. It's just proper location, I think, is the issue that is involved here. It's a very scenic area. And as the gentleman there made comment about Route 231 being a scenic drive also. Location of the site is pretty much on a ball of, they're sitting right out in the middle of a very scenic view area. It's only a quarter mile from the family property that we own. And I just think, and Mr. Davies, I'm sorry, but I was the gentleman that asked you about the 3,300 feet. And about moving it back that far. But there are alternate locations still on M&amp;W's property. I'm not trying to pull it over to my, our family property. But it's only about 3,300 feet, just a little further north, and would be encompassed by trees, power lines, and it wouldn't jut out near as bad as it is now, proposed site. I have just a question or two for the committee here. Have any or all of y'all, did y'all attend the balloon flight test? Anyone in the committee? One?
One.
One, okay. Has anyone been to the site outside of the balloon test? Two people. No, of the committee, okay, okay. So you have actually seen the area that is being placed. That's all I have for now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? One more time.
William Roper, Delmar Farm, Rochelle. First thing I need to do is submit two letters for the record.
Both words. Go back and these two.
I'll take those.
And the first thing I want to show you. You get me under. I have pictures of 10,000 workers. Pictures that you see are a fairytale. I'll explain why. Now, I do have to disclaimer, this picture is made, this picture I had made back in January and February. So that was all parameters, the lattice tower, 199 feet. I did not have time to change that. So I'm not trying to deceive you. But this does give you a better picture of, from the other pictures. I will talk about this a little bit later. So back then, when the balloon test went up, I hired a professional photographer to take this picture. He did not zoom in on it, because I made sure that he had some of the foreground, some of my backyard. That's my backyard. I then hired a graphic designer to place a cell tower in the exact spot where that red balloon was at. This is based on the parameters at that time, like I said. Now, how can I and my close neighbors not be negatively impacted by that? That's a totally different picture from what you saw on the other pictures. And the reason is, those were misleading. I'm thinking CWS took them. They probably didn't use a very good camera. They took them at low elevations. They made sure they were in a spot where a tree or a shrub was blocking the majority of the top. That's why you could only see a little bit of the top. That's a lot more of an impact. Look how high up that sits from the southwest mountains, from my, from my viewpoint.
Do you have a question? Real quick, is that the southwest of the mountains you're looking at?
I believe so, yes, yes. Orange, orange is to the left there, Somerset would be to the right.
Please continue.
Why didn't they show any pictures north of the tower along 231? You know why? Because it's all wide open there. You would see the entire tower if they would have shown you one of those pictures. The application itself has lacked, has a lack of due diligence. This has been rubber stamped. And I'm going to go into, there were, there were two other landowners that I know that offer their land at higher elevations. Mr. Hamm has spoken about this as well. He's right next door to Mike Willis. They're higher elevations, they were not listed on the site selection history. These locations would maximize coverage and minimize impact on any resident. I'm not, I'm not saying, "Don't put this in my backyard, put this down in somebody else's backyard." I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying it should not impact any resident to ruin their view like this. So that some of these other areas are tucked back, surrounded by trees. Why weren't these sites analyzed? And if you want, keep it on Mike Willis's property. I don't want to take away income from him. That's not my point here. He's got areas on his land that are also going back to the north and going up on a higher ground near transmission lines that wouldn't impact anybody's view shed. Put it there. Last point I want to make, and no one's ever, no one has talked about this. I watched on the videos, I watched the workshops, and I never heard anybody talking about this. I don't know if you guys are even aware, but there are new technologies being developed currently over the last two years by Apple Computer, Elon Musk. Two pretty well-known people or companies. They are working on satellite-to-cellphone direct communication, that's cell signals and broadband. This is a game changer. Cell towers could be obsolete in the near future. Now, I'm not talking 20 years down the road, I'm talking about five, three to five. There's also a Virginia-based company, Link, L-Y-N-K, you can go on the website. They're working on this as well, they're probably going to partner. They're probably going to partner. They already had a successful beta test earlier this year, putting multiple satellites in orbit, communicating directly to their cell phones, not using any wire carriers. They hope to be live in 2022. That's less than two years away. Building new cell towers now is like investing in Polaroid, two years before the cellphone cameras blew up the whole camera market. Who buys a camera anymore, right? Use your cellphone. Don't impact the landscape forever for a short-term need. Once that tower goes up, it's not coming down. And I know there's a clause in the contract that says if it becomes abandoned, the owner has to tear it down. What if the, what if the, what if the company isn't around anymore? That's a long battle. Who's going to tear it down? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? If not, back to the planning commission and additional comments from the planning commission. Mr. Trelia.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple of comments. I, I talked to Ms. Hoffman's husband today, who is an active member of the fire department. And he told me that when they go in that area, the fire company can't call back to the firehouse, they can't call back to 911, they can't communicate with each other, they can't communicate with the sheriff. There's no communication there for the fire department. And I'm sure the rescue squad is in the same boat. He, he told me that today. Now, this, this commission is appointed by this board. And this board's job when they're elected is for the health, safety, and well-being of citizens of Madison County. And if this application don't cover all three of those things, I've never seen one come in here that did. And this gentleman is probably true, there is probably something coming down the road. But if we save one life, one life, this cell tower going up right now, we've done something great.
For the, for the record.
Briefly.
For the record, that's 3,800 feet away from that tower. I have Verizon, I have 4G, I have four bars all the time. On the way driving here, I was on the phone all the way to 231 right here. Never lost a signal.
Thank you. Anyone else from the planning commission? Mr. Fisher.
I want to state that this matters, and I'm surprised that so very few people are here supporting this tower. It matters in three ways. Safety, a lot of up here from Brian Gordon, who is the Director of Mercy Communication. Not to read the whole thing, I was to read two sentences. The city town, you know, area would be beneficial to public safety. Currently, there is a very reliable service in that area of the county. In most cases, a call to 911 to be directed to the Orange County ECC. That can cost a life, life really quick. Number two, school children. They need this communication. There's not a lot of them there, but I think everyone that they are, that around Racebound Road in that area, very important. They can't wait two years for new technology that may or may not happen. And three, businesses. Mr. Weaver, who's not here tonight, but he spoke about Papa Weaver Pork, Pork, and how important this tower would be, but of communications for his business. We need this tower now. Thank you.
Anyone else on planning question? Was there anybody attending virtually that had a comment? Can you tell? Wanted to comment?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. In order to make this motion, do we need to read this whole motion or can we make a motion like we normally?
I, I do not think we need to read the whole motion. What I would like to say before I ask for a motion is that I am of the opinion, first off, the planning commission has to make recommendations based on existing ordinances and comprehensive plan to the board of supervisors. And that's one of our guidelines when we look at this tonight, is it in conformance with the ordinance and the comprehensive plan? And in my opinion, the application is in substantial conformance with the applicable provisions of the Madison County Plan and the ordinance, and no one here has pointed out where there is any conflict or incompleteness in the application. Having said that, any other comments from the planning commission? Peter?
I was surprised to see this, that motion. Did it come from you or?
It did not come from me.
I mean, you seldom see a motion with all these whereas clauses.
Yes, sir.
I think it's, I think it's overdone. I would recommend going back to our tradition.
We will be going back to our traditional. We will be doing business as usual. I think the, the motion here was informative and helpful, but however, we will follow our normal procedure unless we are directed to otherwise. Any other comments from the planning commission?
I'm not the planning commission, but I do have a comment that I missed from here from Tracy. She said, excellent and very useful presentation slash information, Butch. Thank you.
Tracy Gardner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other comments, I would like to get a motion from the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in case number SU-11-20-21 be recommended to the board supervisor before approval.
Second. I got a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The motion passes as recommendation to the board of supervisors. Okay. That was the only thing, last thing on our agenda for tonight. Our next meeting will be on 11/18 at 6:30, a workshop meeting. I would like to remind the public again to please stay for the board of supervisor meeting because they make the final decisions in these cases. The planning commission is strictly a, a body that makes recommendations to the board of supervisors. And again, I apologize for not following normal procedures with the pledge of allegiance. First time that's happened, hopefully it will be the last time. Thank you. The, the planning commission meeting is adjourned.
Mike, you don't think we can do that without a motion?
Oh, again, it's been a trying day. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Thanks, Pete. Glad somebody's keeping me straight today.
Um, like you told, we're just in place to order. We do have a board, we do need to adopt. Anybody have anything to add?
Who adopted Jim Test for today?
Motion being sent to further discussion. And then all in favor, just a public say aye. I'll put it at the same time. General public comment. Anybody have any general public comment? All right. Moving on to public hearing. Case number SU-11-20-21 requested by WSX LLC for indefinite subject use permits and develop a wireless communication facility, WCF. The subject property is owned A1 Agricultural and per article zoning ordinance section 14-13-4, uses requiring a special use permit. WCF's ceiling 100 feet in height require a special use permit. The subject property is 376.2 acres and the property owner intends to lease a 10,000 square foot area to the Apple. The WCF would be complying to a roughly 50 by 100 inch in compound. The total site disturbance include access road and fence in compound is estimated to be approximately 1.18 acre. The monocle tower proposed height is 175 feet with attached four-foot lighting rod. The subject property is located on South Blue Ridge Turnpike Route 231 and is owned by M&amp;W Farms LLC. The subject parcel is identified on Madison County's tax map as 69-7. And in hand, an existing dwelling on the site has a coastal address of 950 South Blue Ridge Turnpike, summer set for 22972. William, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davies, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Quite powerful presentation. We all love power. Any questions from the board, either William or the applicant? To the public, before we open it, we have received communication from Charles Teakent and Roy Shannon, Mr. Roffler's lawyer. Pat, would you like to speak about all the letters that Mr. Roffler has submitted to the record and also the email that was received at 5:59 this afternoon?
The, is, is, when you reference the letter, the, the letter that requests this, this board to defer the hearing? Okay. Yes, I don't think there's any necessity for the board to defer the hearing. We received this information late this afternoon, literally within hours of the public hearing. And they're attempting to appeal something that they can't appeal to the board of zoning appeals. So we'll deal with that appeal separately. My recommendation would, would be that the board go forward with the application tonight.
Open it up to the public. The public. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors Chris Hawke with the Piedmont Environmental Council. I will not read my previous comments, but I would like to echo them in this case. Also, per Mr. Fisher's comments, completely agree with the importance of protecting the public health, safety, welfare, as well as providing important connectivity resources for schoolchildren as well as businesses. However, if other alternative locations are available on the same site, it seems kind of like an easy transition. The county could ask that to be at least looked into. It wouldn't hurt anything. Lowering the tower could potentially be used if there was a higher elevation with better screening, not trying to get in the way of connectivity. But if there is an opportunity for less impactful view sheds in this scenario, it makes sense to at least look into them. I, I would like to note, as someone else did, that photo is taken by the applicant were mostly from roadways and not other important locations. Just want to highlight that fact, there are other, are other important locations in the county, not just roadways. And last but not least, I just highlight the importance of being cordial to the public when I'm speaking from the diocese and on behalf of the county. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you for being respectful to me throughout my time here, and I appreciate working with you all.
Remember all the best of luck in your next. Other public comment? Other public comment? Rob, please.
William Roffler, Rochelle. You, you guys are going to like me, maybe I shouldn't go be going and working for Chris Hawke because I'm probably going to take his place, right? I don't want to be here. I don't want this going on. But I have to, I moved here for a reason, to, to, to live a simple country life, quiet life. I never expected to be involved with this. I'm here because I have to protect my property. I have to protect what I, my investments and my way of life. And basically, that's it. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Yeah, just kind of want to reiterate what I mentioned to the planning committee. I would like to, I know a lot of money and time has been invested in this by the tower company. But Mr. Roffler said there, we have a lot of time and money invested in their property. And I don't know, I'm not going to ask y'all the same question I did the planning committee, but it's going to be a considerable eyesore in such a scenic area. And I believe the, it's going to be very obstructive. And as the tower company has addressed, they're trying to make it less intrusive. They're going from 200 to 175. So they know it's a problem. They've gone from a lattice tower to a mono tower, so it's less intrusive. And they're going to paint it a different color. But if you paint it anything, it's still going to look terrible. I'm with Pete Elliott here, that we need cell coverage down there. There's no reason one person dying because we don't have cell coverage. But do we have to sacrifice the, one of the prettiest areas in Madison County? We don't have views of the Blue Ridge Mountains. We got the southwestern down there. That's all we got, but it's purty. And I think if we, I'm basically asking for y'all to postpone a decision on this tonight and look at a different avenue on M&amp;W's property that would be less obtrusive to the entire area. I've talked with several of the neighbors, and they are all for moving it back where there's some trees. In Madison County, where there are existing towers now, they're not sitting out on a high knoll knob that I've seen. They're at the base of hills, they're around trees, and that's where it should be. And it is 3,300 feet away, but it's still, it would actually be higher in elevation. It would give more coverage to the new, I don't know what you call it, resort, the old Kennamont farm, that property. They would have better reception, which is a lot of stuff's going to be going on up there. If they don't have phone service, are we going to have problems up there? It's much better, it'll cover a lot more of Madison, just because it's on a knoll. We're down the site, I don't know if you've seen the topography of it or not, but the proposed site is here. The power line is here. And from there up, it's pretty much flat all up towards Rochelle. You get a lot more coverage. You only sacrifice 3,300 feet. Well, that's not going to stop you from going all the way to the Route 24. It's almost a bird's eye view from either site on the proposed site or an alternate site a little higher up, and you've got a great coverage of that. So we can kill two birds with one stone. We can hide this thing a little bit and get rid of the obtrusiveness of it and still improve, improve the ser, the service in Madison County, which is, that's what we're all looking for, better service in Madison and satisfy Orange too and the Route 24. Thank you so much for your time. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other public comment?
Wait, I'm sorry, but I got one thing I want to say. If you notice the one picture that Mr. Davies had, and it was a picture of the, of the new tower there, and it was a picture of the power line. What stood out the most? The pole on that big power tower that was there beside the pole? It was pretty obvious which one of the teachers would see. Thank you.
Other public comment? Other public comment? All right, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, electrician public comment?
Excuse me. If you got anything, let me know.
Tracy says, I think that's tough, Jackson's painting. Sorry.
No public comment.
There's a comment about this.
This is being very fast right now here. All right. You check both, both streams, Livingston, then our video and the GoToMe?
Yes, sir.
Looks like this, you know, I'm going to be shot. All right, back to the board. Before the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question, maybe because Mr. Davies, I suspect, I don't know who else could answer it. The, the proposed location on the farm, was that selected because the owners of the property said, this is where I want you to put a tower? Or was it selected by the company who identified? Or was it selected by the company who identified, were they, were they?
They actually spent time and looked at a number of locations, uh, not just on this farm, but other properties as well. They could not get the coverage that they needed, uh, except at this site, and they, they really worked at it. Uh, they, they actually looked at a place over on Somerset Farm, uh, and that made out that the owner of the plantation was opposed to it, so they had to go look. And this, this was by far and away the best site, and they looked at, I would say, a half a dozen seriously. Uh, so it's, uh, they spent, uh, they spent a lot of time on it looking at it. So, and they use Chantel to, if you notice the coverage map, uh, they actually pay fairly close attention to that 'cause that's how they market their property. Uh, the tower goes up, they want at least, uh, the two users on it, so hopefully, uh, and hopefully there'll be more. It depends on, on the use.
I guess you're hoping, you help me make a point that wasn't just randomly selected.
Oh, no, it, it, it took, it took time. Absolutely, it took time.
And they're, and even they have no, it's not a good business move for them to locate a tower somewhere that doesn't have a lot.
Absolutely.
For their ability to, to, to locate. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, votes from the board?
Well, Pete, Pete's right. My husband's been in the fire company for sixty years, and we just talked about this the other day. There is no cell coverage there for either EMS or the fire company. Uh, often they have to drive a vehicle out to get cell service, to get back to the trucks. It's needed down there. And I can remember when Sheetz came to Madison, everybody threw a fit, and it was gonna ruin the, the countryside. It was, it was gonna make us too metropolitan. Well, nobody pays any attention to Sheetz anymore. And the first cell tower that went up, I, I heard people fuss constantly about it was ruining the beauty of Madison County. Now people don't even see it. You don't notice it because you use it and you need it. So I know, I feel like this company has done their due diligence to find the right location. Um, I know it does, can't please everyone. Uh, it's always, I don't want it in my backyard, and I understand that because I probably wouldn't either. But I think it's needed, and I'm certainly in favor of it.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm, I'm, I took my oath back in January. I, I was, I'm charged with health, safety, and welfare. There, there's no question that, that this, um, cell tower provides that, or I knew it before Mr. Davies put the slides up there. Uh, the fact that, um, that the cell company has searched for two years, uh, to find this spot is also convincing to me that their due diligence is done. And Mr. Hammond, if I'm not mistaken, you, they did meet with you, they walked through a property. Is that right? Yeah, so I thought you said it, it's the, um, it's the planning commission workshop. So for whatever reason, um, that spot, uh, did not, did not work for them. Um, the power lines who there are, which is, uh, we do have a decommissioning, uh, so cell towers and the oil businesses. I do appreciate, uh, CWS, uh, changed those slides showing one seventy-five feet, uh, two hundred, as I did go through the blue. Tess, I, I went down there, and when I went down there, I, I had my cell phone on. And when I went by, uh, Mr. Hammond's place, um, I had a signal, like, okay, I got a signal. And then I tried to dial, and then it was gone. I turned it off. I mean, I, then I stopped dialing, and then I got to my old one in the bar. And, and it went on like that, and I drove back and forth to Somerset Center Store, back to, to, uh, the U-Dot Store, back and forth, trying to figure out, um, what was going on. I never did get, get through long enough to, to make a call. And also Tommy Weaver, uh, that had that farm down there, he generated at the, the workshop that I can use to listen, that, um, they have a tractor fire down there, and so his brother lost a tractor. Well, you replace that, but can you imagine somebody getting pins under that tractor and not being able to, to get out? That, that's scary. So, um, I think the due diligence has been done, two years' work of, work on this. Um, I see no reason why we should deny, uh, this, that you said. Um, I didn't say it. I'm going to rush this, so. Um, Andy, you've been up to my barn a bunch of times, a bunch of times. You notice the two cell phone towers you can see from my barn? Coming out my garage, where I can see actually four towers. Um, I did get two of them, a mono bowl, I lifted one of them today. Um, one of them actually is lighting, and red light, black lights all the time, just right out in front of her. Um, I, I, I remember when I was like a little kid, when they put the first ones up, the lattice tower, you see from my barn. Um, remember the neighbors coming together and going up against it? It, y'all gonna sit up on top of the knoll and get something there? Um, we did a cell phone tower a while back up there in Hood. It was odd to me that I remember such resistance at that time when they put those first towers up, um, from everybody in the future. And then the ones in Hood, we have never had cell phone coverage. Please put the cell phone coverage tower up immediately. Please put it up. I mean, I don't think there was one person that says anything negative about it. It sits out in the knoll field now. I don't actually need to light it with, with any attempt.
I love to be able to see one of mine, but.
I know. Um.
When we got it.
The, the, the problem that we get to is, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Roffler, but all you like. Um, it's for everybody. There are people down there conducting those. There's some big operations down in that part of the world. I know you, business all over the United States and a little bit all over the world. Um, and that's why you talk about the residents that would like to have cell phone coverage. The place where I get cell phone coverage is once I go past Somerset Store, and that straightaway almost to the railroad track. And there I can get a little bit of cell phone coverage, make my conversation short. As long as I keep on going up into Somerset, I'll at least begin to tell them it's time. Um, I'm doing that web one. I appreciate the comments about satellite phones. I think I, I'm sitting here thinking, I've been with the planning commission for, for you're eleven or twelve years now. Um, I've heard about satellite phones for eleven or twelve years now. I, I wish they were here. I wish you could decommission all these things. It wasn't a necessity. I'm sure Dennis would like to have cell phone coverage up there, and every person that lives on that side.
For the same price.
But.
For the same price.
They have, um, charging cell. Um, you look at the cell phone map or the towers that they propose, they're the huge portion of Madison County. The option is even there. The county is going to end up putting up cell phone, uh, for emergency services down for traffic and accounting. Hopefully, we can partner with cell phone providers to light up that part of the world and provide something that gives a necessity at this day and age. The one tower I was looking at this evening is a brand new monoculars I bought. Um, it is kind of a blue, it's white. I looked at it one time, the monoculars came back across, and see again, it kind of blends in with the skyline, a little bit of it. I certainly don't want to see one of these fancy pine trees, but. Sorry, impact mode, understand, same regard, vision necessity, something that we need for public safety, community, work, development, everything else on the. You guys got anything?
Can I ask you one question?
It's irregular, but yes.
Um, since y'all are gonna go through with this, I understand, um, I would like a different location. Give us the same coverage, probably better. But can you put in the works of your documents that if, let's just say, once the Rofflers', um, hopes come true, as all of ours do, that we can get satellite coverage instead of cell tower, that once it is no longer of use, it's de-commissioned, that it has to be removed within a certain timeframe? I'm just thinking about that, rather than that thing sitting up there for the next ten, twenty, thirty years, uh, like a tombstone. If you could put it in your documents to have it removed after it's de-commissioned. Thank you.
Currently, currently, in the ordinance, um, there is, in the law ordinance, there is a decommissioning clause. Um, already pointing here to number ten on the application. And the event that WCF approved as part of this application is abandoned and is no longer in operation. WCF including these support structures and accessory equipment, fencing, and all other material associated with the application shall be permanently removed from subject property in accordance with the power lines that forth in Madison County's ordinance with respect to abandoned WCF. It doesn't say a timeframe. I would certainly take, yes, please. Go ahead.
You know, if, if we did look for it and then make some modernization of our.
Absolutely.
We could make it very clear, and even say that, that people who own the dirt are responsible for it. Cell phone tower goes away, the company goes away, so all of the people on the property.
Other?
Mr. Chairman, I believe, uh, looking at, uh, addition, proposed condition number ten, I believe the zoning ordinance already has definitely stepped forth there, and so they would apply if it was adopted.
My comment, thank you. Um, my comment, the legging would be that maybe we should add something to our ordinance, saying a timeframe for de-commission. Um, and bringing that back in front of us would have no, if we come up with a realistic timeline, adding that in, going through a public hearing process on the decommissioning and tearing down the cell phone tower, I would have no idea putting in a realistic timeline, no sweat at all. Um, so what we can do. Um, anybody else got anything? Like, play the board. And we are supposed to reference the resolution that and the case number. Is it Mr. Tages?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tages is referenced here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve case number eighty-eight dash eleven dash twenty dash twenty-one, and resolution number twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Checking.
Motion made in section, further discussion here in all areas of the public, saying aye.
Aye.
I have the same sign. Would y'all entertain if William was to bring us a recommendation on de-commission?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, just have, it might be, uh, on your side or your mind, so that's on the, that's on the to-do list for.
Um, Mr. Webb, I also, also understand if you want to talk to us about Royal Resort and the Jocelyn County Code in reference to. I think in the, uh, planning commission workshop, the conversation was there was some, uh, Royal Resort, there was a venue in this grade, uh, terminology changes that you made. Give us a quick update on that, I guess, if that's what it is.
So I, I wonder will we make some amendments to the Royal Resort? We sort of went to, to just made sort of a statement that, that, and you. So I get, I don't see, it's, we've always, it's been, those two terms have been interchangeable. I, I think it kind of live for some reason, it's sometimes part of the venue of Royal Resort, some of that resort word. So when we made those, uh, changes, uh, six, six months ago, uh, part of the motion was to change Royal Resort to the venue. I put a copy of the ordinance online. I think there was a couple random Royal Resort, I was still, but I went back and, and removed that. So I think we're okay.
The diligence of, of yourself and planning commission catching lots of additions and, uh, found a couple that we just mean.
Right, that's all right. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, just changed it, but that was hard, that sort of blanket sort of amendment we did. Yeah, I think Sean said it wasn't, you know, subs, we use those terms interchangeable, then, then.
There's, this is a matter of procedure. We do have the state county code that was adopted, uh, not, not coming a month or two ago, has the zoning ordinance. That's, that's, this, these are our ordinances. Now we have words that are, are different and, um, than what we adopted. So what we need to do is to do that with a little more formality and identify which words and the mechanic code we are changing and have that in front of the board, so it's, it's very clear what's being changed, but not have a problem with that. So the better process is to, uh, get that written up and send it to the, and, and process that at the same time when process the next zoning ordinance change. That makes sense.
Very good.
When, when is the media code supposed to go live?
Uh, soon.
And, and I've worked with media code before, and they're really, it's really kind of, usually we have a hearing, we adopt something that's a toward change. Uh, my experience is you can keep up a contact with them, you just kind of email them, this was the ordinance change, that's all, and they'll update it online for, you know, community.
So this did come from the planning commission at its work session, so, uh, the idea of the term. This is, I don't know that it's an emergency, but this, something.
Something needs to be cleaned up.
Maybe the next time we have any requirements to be processed.
Like, oh. Um, anybody have any information for the public specifically? All right, public comment, back to generalized public comment. Anybody can shoot from the hip. Yes, Mike Moscow.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, I didn't hear this, and maybe you can say it, but it is, in the de-commissioning of the cell towers, there is one limit there. Now it says the owner, but if the owner, the bank dropped, then that could be an issue, and if you put it on the landowner, then that might resolve that issue. There are timeframes already, one hundred days a day, ninety days, and yours.
Right.
In fact.
Thanks, Mike.
The other thing is if they're going to have a, a formal process for its changing, the, and that venue, you might have had, you got it one there, not open spaces, I think.
I think we do have a four or five minute. That was my fault.
Thank you, Mike. Other public comment? Other public comment? Any other business before this evening? We all want to.
Mr. Chairman, I move to your second.
Motion made in section, further discussion here in all areas of the public, saying aye.
Aye.